Hi, everybody. It's Stephanie Courtney with the Learning Project Network Podcast. I'm so excited today. We have a very special guest, my friend, my sister, Jamie Stacy. Okay, she is coming through with an amazing announcement. First of all, well, it's kind of not announcement. It's an announcement to our podcast show. We have endorsed her. She is running for MEED School District Board. We are so excited for her to share a little bit about why you are doing this. What should we know about you and how are you going to bring about change? So tell us who you are?
Well, I'm pretty easy. Actually, I'm a pretty easy person to get to know. So a lot of people want to know about my history. So growing up in Southeast Missouri, that's where I was born and raised. I was born and raised there. And I was raised by a single mom in a home with three other siblings. And it was always us four and my mom. And she decided to go to school and really be empowered through education. And once that happened, she had an opportunity to to open up for her, where she began to work for SafeCo Insurance. And she became a Claim Support Manager for SafeCo Insurance here in Spokane. So that's where the transition happened for us is she went from working at a legal services office in Southeast Missouri to Claim Support Manager for SafeCo Insurance, which is now Liberty Mutual. But she worked for them and retired from that company, actually. My dad was not present in the home, but his love was not absent from my life. So I knew my dad loved me. But he, you know, it was just a situation where we had two adults who knew that having a relationship, living together, whatever, was not going to be the best thing for them. So I'm so thankful for my parents for recognizing that. I was in college at the time and once I graduated from college, I moved out here to Spokane with the rest of my siblings. We made the trek out here and it, we've been in here since 2000.
I did not realize you were the last sibling to move here. I thought you had moved here right when it, and so that makes, that makes sense. So y'all listen, so Jamie and I know each other from church. We also know each other from the public school system. And absolutely love everything that you do, what you stand for. And I mean, like I said, when I met with you, it's like two peas in a pod. And tell us a little bit about Swag, your baby, and how did you even like develop that?
So Swag is, like you said, my baby. It is. It stands for Strong Women Achieving Greatness. And that came about because there was a need in the school.
Yeah.
There were some young women who had been fighting since middle school. And then I was invited to come in and do some mediation. Was already working in our community as a mentor. And so one of the people that was working with me had shared my information with the people at this school who were like, we've got to do something because these young women are still fighting.
Yeah.
And our next, our last resort is, you know, just to expel them from this space.
Wow.
So it was me coming in. Yeah. Oh, yeah. It was February into the school year. And they had, they'd come to the school from their middle schools, bringing all of that drama with them. And so I went in and I did a mediation and in two days, all of the things that they had been fighting about, it was over. It was squashed. And the reason why it was squashed is because I asked them some important questions. Like, I know what you've been doing. I've got the emails. I've gotten the texts. I don't need to hear a recap of what happened in the bathroom.
That part. That's just a waste of time.
Right. And so it was just like, I want to know why. My thing is candy. I always bring candy. So the first time I met with them, I brought some Now and Later candies. And I talked about like, what you're doing now will impact your later. The second time I came with Tootsie Rolls.
Need that same candy.
Well, yeah. Yes. And so the second time I came, I came with some Tootsie Rolls. And it was that old commercial from back in the day, whatever it is, I think I see becomes a Tootsie Roll to me. And the boy's in the park and he's looking around at the tree and it becomes a Tootsie Roll. The plane becomes a Tootsie Roll. All these things becomes a, become a Tootsie Roll. And so I began to say to them, some of you have been showing up in this space as Tootsie Rolls because you're afraid for people to see the real you.
Yes.
And that provoked immediate tears and some immediate reflection. And those young ladies began to express, you're right. You're right. Because if I show up as my authentic self, I won't have these friends. They are not going to like me. They are not going to hang out with me. They're, all of this will be over. And so I began to create space for them to share that. Well, after that, the meeting, you know, during that mediation, everything was done. It was done. Like, there was no more fighting because people understood the why, like they got to their why. And of course, after that, my phone wouldn't stop ringing. So it was just like, I had to take some steps back because principals were calling me.
Oh, I already know.
Teachers were calling me.
I already know.
They're like, you come do a mediation.
I already know.
Yes. So taking those steps back, I realized that there was a need.
Yeah.
And then one of the biggest things I had to say for me was, what would I have wanted? What did I need when I was their age?
Yeah.
So I had to create what I wish existed.
Wow. Okay. Can we just talk about this? Because there is this reoccurring theme with everybody today that we're doing podcasts with is that they're talking about creating what doesn't exist.
Yes.
And that is a very important thing to remember as you're listening to the different podcasts. Remembering that we are, we can be what we need to be when we need to create it. If we just have to take those risks, we have to take those chances. And we have to be willing to make those mistakes that will happen while we're creating. And so, you know, when you think about your upbringing, your childhood, getting here to Spokane, creating Swag, you're at a very interesting point in your life.
I am.
And I am just so excited to watch all of this unfold. You are running for Spokane, not Spokane, I was about to say Spokane City Council. You're going to go there next. But this is Spokane's, Spokane School Systems Board at MEED. And so tell me a little bit about why you wanted to run for that and what are you trying to change?
MEED School District is amazing. It's amazing. And there are amazing people that work in that district.
Yeah.
There are teachers, there are educators in that space that have a heart for children.
Yes.
And, and the families that they serve. So coming into that space, coming into MEED, we were embraced. Our family was. And at first, we did not think that was going to be the case because obviously in Spokane alone, people that look like me, we're the minority.
Yes.
That increases when you move into spaces like MEED.
Yes.
And so coming into that space, man, I absolutely loved the people that were there. I became PTSO President at the school where my children attended. And coming into that space, I was able to create some things for them that they did not have before. I would start all of our PTO meetings with greeting people. I would start with like hello, hola, bonjour, konnichiwa, yakwe. Is there anyone here that I haven't greeted in their native tongue? Just creating that space and a sense of belonging. Belonging matters so much.
Okay. What is going on on these podcasts today? Listen, you know that is the new city's motto. We belong. We all belong. So it used to be the city of choice, but now the city is choosing belonging. And that is the new city's motto. And so when you're talking about that, like, there's so many of us that are fighting for these spaces for people to belong. And so I just had to interject there. This is good.
Well, that sense of belonging matters so much. It helps people to, like, it increases their hope score. Let me say it like that. So hope, we talk about our ace score.
Yeah.
You also have a hope score.
Absolutely. Can we say that for the people in the back? Because we are all stuck upon this ACES training and we talk about this over and over. And I think it even goes into what I say all the time, which is how many positive experiences can we create for a child? In order to, in order for them to reverse maternal health outcomes and these different negative experiences. Tell me a little bit about this hope, hope score that you're talking about.
So there's a book called The Science of Hope and it is one that I've read and I've read it a few times. I'm reading it again, just to kind of go back into some things that spoke to me before, pulling those things out again and really applying them where I am now, even with my decision to run for MEED School Board. So with that, in that decision to run for MEED School Board, hope is, it is a verb.
Yeah.
It's an action word. It demands a plan. So you can have hope, faith, and love. So with the hope, you've got a plan. The faith is believing that the plan is going to work. But you, there's work. The plan is the work.
Yeah.
Raising that hope score is, I have a plan. I know what it is that I want to accomplish. So putting some goals with that. And then having faith to be like, I believe in myself. I believe in the people around me that together we can accomplish this. And then the love is, is that sense of belonging.
Yeah.
Loving all humans. All humans deserve to be treated with dignity and respect.
Yeah.
And that is the approach that I always take. So applying that as a stay-at-home mom first.
Yeah.
My husband and I were very intentional about that. I was a stay-at-home mom for 12 years.
Wow.
And so we had our children in a space where we had created a sense of belonging. There was autonomy in that space. They were free to be themselves authentically. And having, having that space at home and then sending them into the house of education, which is what I like to refer to school as, as the house of education. I wanted them to have that same sense of belonging, that same space to critically think about things, to ask questions, to know the truth about who they are and the contributions of their people. To send them into a space where that was happening, where those conversations were happening as well. So that, and sending them into the house of education. I believe that our family was very fortunate to land where we landed in the MEED community and the school that our children went to. And the principal and the educators that were in that building were very supportive. And so that right there, and it really helps, like raising your hope score. Your hope score, it is scientifically proven. There's, there's evidence that, that shows and supports this where you can mitigate your ACES score by raising your hope score.
Wow. So the more hope we build in our community, that actually we're raising everyone's hope score. And so how are you raising hope by running for the MEED School Board?
Well, first, I would have to say, as a woman of color, as a person of color, just filing was historical.
Okay. Say that one more time because when you said this to me, I was like, what did you just say?
Yes.
So explain that to people because I need them to understand this.
So just filing for, to run for a school board was a historical moment.
Historical moment, y'all.
So there, I was the first person of color to do so. And then secondly, people have asked me like, if you win.
When you win?
When I win. Right. When I win, I will be the first.
Wow.
I will be the first. And they've asked me, how does it, how do you feel about that? How do you feel about being the first? I'm like, it's, I feel great about it because I know that I won't be the last.
Absolutely.
I will not be the last. So that is raising the hope score of all of the little black and brown children in MEED. They're going to look at me and say, oh, my goodness, she did that?
Yeah.
I can do that.
Yeah.
And I can even be the superintendent if I want to be.
Wow.
So that's, that's how we raise our hope score. And we create this educational equity in these spaces. It raises our hope score. So we don't have to do this equity versus merit. It's not a versus, it's and.
Yes.
Because where, when equity is present, you will inevitably raise merit. Merit is an inevitable outcome of equity. So having those things present, we're going to raise the hope score.
Oh, I love this. So we've got to tell a story because I think it's absolutely necessary. So Jamie calls me and she's like, Stephanie, we're about to, I'm about to head up to the MEED School Board meeting. And they're going to be talking about CRT, they're going to be talking about this stuff. And they're talking about doing all this, you know, things that we don't stand for, such as taking out diverse books, lived experiences, voices, things like that. So a bunch of us were like, oh, we're coming. So we all get in the car, we drive down to this place. And it's just a bunch of us. And we just see Jamie sitting in the front. She's turned around like, come on, y'all. So we come down and we sit with her and we are expecting this craziness to happen. I mean, we are all prepared. We came prepared so much that we all had our tennis shoes on. Now, we are all professionals, all activists. We, I mean, none of, a bunch of us haven't fought and had any problems like this since like kindergarten. But we've thought for sure, when we got into this MEED School Board room, people were going to act ballistic. We get in there and one by one, these parents stood up and was like, you will not silence these voices. You will not take out these diverse books. You will not silence, silence a community of people that need to be heard and need to see themselves. We were like, well then, do we need to do anything? No, we don't. Actually, all of these parents and all of these people are pretty much standing up against
Yes.
silencing voices.
You're right about that.
I, I was shocked. I was, my mouth was on the floor.
And see, I've lived in that community enough and I've worked in that community. I've, I've worked in education for, well, since 2016. I was a parent educator in, in MEED School District. So I worked in all of these different schools and I saw the teachers. I saw what they, what they did in their classrooms. And it did not surprise me to hear them stand up and the MEED community come together the way that they did. It didn't surprise me at all. And the reason why, this is another reason why I feel like I should really be running for school board, is proximity matters. Proximity matters. So there was someone that stood up and they asked the MEED School Board at that meeting, they asked them, like, did you ask any of your school board members of color about what you're trying to do?
Talk about this for 5.2 seconds. If you are in politics and you are making decisions on behalf of people, it might be helpful for you to actually go and be in those communities. Because so many of these politicians are going and making decisions about people that they don't even know. And all they're doing is liking their Facebook. That is not good enough. You need to be in space with people. And that does not count during the election process.
Right.
That counts all year round, all different kinds of people and hearing all different kinds of voices in order to properly represent them. So sorry, I had to say that because this is a real thing that's happening in Spokane. Progressives, non-progressives. We don't see you. Where are you at? Why are you not coming to any of the events? How are you really learning about lived experience and voices? You're talking to one person, you're tokenizing people. That's not okay. We need to hear all kinds of people, young, old, vets, not vets. You know, unions, non-unions.
Absolutely.
All of us have a voice. All of us have a place to play in this community. But if you don't know them and you're not hearing people and you're not connecting with people, then you're absolutely not going to get the right perspectives.
Right. And that's why I felt like, you know, running for school board will make me visible to more people. Proximity matters. It really does. And it's like, I want to be that person that you can ask those questions with, without fear of judgment.
Yes.
And I think a lot of times people are afraid to ask those questions because they feel like they will be judged for asking. Simply, yeah, just simply asking the questions. I am not here to do that. I am here to have an honest conversation. And I've had that with people in MEED and it's been wonderful. I've had questions, ask, people ask me questions, everything from CRT to, to about, to my hair. And I've, I've had conversations with people about all of those things. And I'm like, so much, let's do it. Let's do it. Let's have that, let's have those conversations. Proximity matters. You want to know, I believe there's cultural humility that comes into play. Because even though I am a woman of color, I'm a, and I have lived in this world, having a black experience. My, there are forks in the road when it comes to other black people. Our experience is not all going to be the same. So there's cultural humility that comes into play. I can share with you what my experience has been.
Yeah.
And I can share with you how I have overcome some things. But that doesn't mean that that's going to be the next black person or the next person of color that you meet, that it's going to be their experience. So proximity matters. I can, I'm not speaking for everybody when you ask me these questions, but I can tell you what it's like to, to have a black experience in this world.
No, that's right. You know, you said something really interesting to me earlier on when you told me, you're like, hey, I'm going to get ready to run for school board. And you had mentioned the importance of being a voice. What does it mean to be a voice in the MEED School District? And how are you really going to be a voice for people with different perspectives?
So being a voice, it, it only embodies being able to make love louder. Okay? So a lot of times what we're hearing is there, there are polar, polarizations that have happened. Okay? So with those polarizations, there's always a voice that's louder. So I want to make some of those more quiet voices. Those who are not represented by the majority. I want to give voice to their concerns, to whatever it is that they need. Advocacy demands a broad lens.
Yes.
A broad lens. So whenever you're advocating, you might, it might be, I'm advocating for my son or I'm advocating for my child. To just know that in your advocating, you are impacting a lot of other people.
Yes.
And this is what I saw happen, even with my family and our situation. And MEED, like I said, they're, MEED is amazing. They rallied around our family and we were able to get what we needed. But having a voice, it's being able to say the quiet things out loud.
That's deep.
The things that, because here's the truth, you will never know what you don't want to know.
Now, that is the truth.
You don't want to know it just. And that is the power of privilege. Like, I have the power of privilege of not knowing what I don't want to know.
Yeah.
And I don't want to know about, I just ignore it. So proximity kind of puts you in a space to where, hey, I probably should know a little bit about that and about that struggle, about those people. And because it, it could potentially impact me as well. And I think that that's part of honoring all humans, is knowing that what you do, it, it really does impact others.
Absolutely. What are your top threes? Like, when it comes to running for this board, what are the three things that are important to you?
Very simple. Parents, teachers, kids.
I love it.
Parents, you are the first teacher your children
Absolutely.
will have. You will have the greatest influence
Absolutely.
on them, which is why my husband and I cho, chose that I would be a stay-at-home mom for those first crucial, volatile years of our children's lives because we wanted our values to be the greatest
Yeah.
influence in their life.
Yes.
So we, we made that decision. We were fortunate enough to be able to make that decision.
Yes.
A lot of families don't have that ability. So I understand that even in that, I'm, I have experienced some privilege to be able to be a stay-at-home mom.
Yes.
So then there's that part. Parents, your voice matters. Your input matters. What do you want to see in your child's classroom? Let's talk about that. Let's talk about how we are educating our children to be aware and walk with an awareness in this world of how other people will be impacted by what you say, what you don't say, your silence.
Because that is an answer.
Yes.
Don't get it twisted.
People will be impacted by that as well.
Yes.
And people will be impacted by what your children say and do, their behaviors. The first time I was ever called the N-word, I was in kindergarten.
Wow.
I was in kindergarten because I, I had a little red ball that another young man wanted. And when I wouldn't give it to him, he was, he called me the N-word. So this is a five-year-old.
Yep.
So then you have to ask yourself, how soon do we need to have those conversations? Obviously, that conversation was not being had at home.
Yes.
So where do you begin to have those conversations? When do you begin to have those conversations? I believe parent voices is important. Maybe parents need to be like, you know what? I don't want you talking to my kid about that.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then, just like we give you an opportunity to choose in and out of things, you can choice out of that.
Yes.
So, but just know that you are impacting your child in a way that may cause him to walk through this world in a deficit. Because he is not, he or she will not be moving at the same pace
As everyone else.
as everyone, thinking as critically as everyone else. And so that's important to know. Teachers, I'm an educator. I'm an educator. And so I know how policy, policies and procedures impact your classrooms.
Oh, my gosh. What policy do you think is the worst one that's actually impacting our teachers? And what do you think is like one of the best ones? Like, if you don't know one right off the top of your head, that's fine. But I think this is always this thing that people are talking about, which is, this policy is impacting teachers and they don't want to be here anymore because of these policies. And people just don't believe that they even exist. So I'm like, they do exist. There's policies that don't make any sense whatsoever, but we continue to teach every day.
There are policies and procedures. So the policy kind of gives a guideline. The procedure is how it's executed. So when you consider, I will say for teachers,
Yep.
that there are not enough policies and procedures around how discipline is carried out in spaces. And a lot of teachers have, have voiced that they do not feel supported by admin. And this, this is what I'm hearing from MEED School District teachers. And they want to feel supported in their classrooms. I think that that's very important.
Absolutely.
I would say what we don't have in MEED is we don't have something that really supports mental health. Mental health is so important. If you are not, to me, I would just rather call it health.
Yeah.
Because we're talking about the whole body.
Yeah, it's a holistic approach.
If your teacher tested positive for COVID, would you want them to come in and test?
Absolutely not. Please stay home.
Exactly.
Call me and I will deliver you something.
Exactly. So why do we want our teachers who are, are not mentally healthy in our classrooms?
That part. And then when they hurt a student verbally or mentally,
Yes.
then we have something to say.
Yes.
And this goes back to what we talked about, literally the first podcast we did today with City Councilwoman Betsy Wilkerson. We talked about humanizing politicians.
Yes.
Humanizing educators.
Absolutely.
If we don't even recognize the humanity part in that, which you're talking about, we can't even get to. Because we think that these people are supposed to operate like robots. These are individuals and humans. They hurt just like anyone else.
Absolutely. There's no denying that educators give so much and they do so much. And so that label of superhero
Yes.
has been placed on them. Yes. And so they feel like that they have to behave at that level. But really what they need to understand and they really need to embrace is their humanness. That they need to be supported. Mental health support, teachers.
Yeah.
That is so important. And then as far as our students are concerned, the same. Mental health support for our students. And when, when I say teachers, I'm not just saying those in the classroom. I'm talking about our admin and parent educators, all of the supports that we have, even our janitors.
Yes.
Because they have to deal with things.
Oh, my God.
They have to deal with kids saying stuff to them.
Uh, yes, they do. And that's the one thing I, I can't wait for us to have our upcoming podcast. There are a few students that are in our peer groups that are going to be coming to talk about what they've been There are a few students that are in our peer groups that are gonna be coming to talk about what they've been working on this summer and doing. But I think people need to really have this conversation with students, which is teachers are human beings, okay? When you say hurtful things to them, it hurts. When you're doing certain things to them, it hurts. And people are coming from very hard backgrounds anyways. They do not wanna be in space where they're constantly being poking and prodded. And I think one of the things that we constantly say is. Well, you're the adult, you should be able to do this, you should be able to handle this. Sometimes you just can't handle it. You can't handle it. It's too much. And when it's too much, you start, uh you start really performing poorly. And you start disconnecting to your work, or disconnecting to those kids, or disconnecting from the field and the mission and the purpose of why we're here.
That's why we need adequate mental health support for our teachers and for our kids. They need adequate mental health support in those spaces. And having that resource, I believe, can really change things. As far as like policies and procedures. Uh for Mead School District, a lot of people have asked me, what are you gonna change? What are you changing? And I'm like this, I'm not here to reinvent the wheel. That's not what this is about. There are a lot of things that Mead does well. And we need to continue doing those things well. We need to support academic rigor. We need to support those things uh in in our classrooms and making sure our classroom sizes are are at a. Space where our teachers can teach and uh create space for our kids to critically think. We need to support those things. But here's, here's what we also have to begin to look at. So we have. Some opportunities. This is what we have. It's not about going in there and now you have this new board member. That's gonna change everything in me. No, it's about looking at the opportunities that we have to make things better.
Absolutely. And that right there in itself, how are we making everything better? How are we fostering a sense of belonging?
It's it's so amazing to hear this. Like, the whole concept of belonging and creating a sense of belonging. For me, my background is behavioral health science. So I've studied belonging for the past, for years.
And it's been in your uh in your work, very evidently, y'all. Listen, I didn't go through anybody's bios and accolades and all that stuff because y'all can do that on your own. But you have received a lot of recognition for creating a sense of belonging in a lot of student space, specifically with girls. Because girl spaces are very difficult at times. They can be, but they also can be very powerful. And build hope and courage. And we've seen that when we work together um through the different programs, so.
Yes, because I don't know what it is with women, but there's always this pecking order.
Oh my gosh, yes.
And wanting to tear each other down. I do not support that. And swag is absolutely against any kind of a narrative that even suggests that. And here's another thing about swag, is it's not an indictment of men. We're not sitting over here saying, men, it's all your fault. Men, you're the problem. We're. Just polar opposite of that. We are like, hey, we need men.
We need.
We need everybody. Working together. So I can't, I just this sense of belonging, um. One of the people that I have studied and followed um some of the work that they've done is psychologist Brené Brown.
Yes, my favorite.
I like her. I like the work that she does around belonging, but I know that. Even though Brené Brown is the name that we hear, she actually works with a team. There are teams and people across the country who study these things. And what comes out of that? The it's very powerful and 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 the way it is applied in these spaces. So when you're applying a sense of belonging, you're looking at how are people seeing themselves? In this space. And belonging is not just, I'm over here by myself. Belonging is being in a group of people and saying, I am a part. I am able to co- I have a contribution here. And my contribution matters. See, we're all part, we're all pieces of the puzzle. We have this beautiful puzzle, right? And every piece has a part in the puzzle.
I love it.
But here's the truth, not every piece fits. With every piece of the puzzle. Because the centerpiece is the centerpiece for a reason. The corner piece is a corner piece for a reason. So allowing those people to be their authentic selves. Yes. This is what creates a sense of belonging. So stop trying to make the corner piece fit in the middle.
Stop being the corner. You're not the corner. You're not the corner.
Right. Yes, and I I just have this conversation all the time. Swag is doing two camps in partnership with Y W C A.
And more, cuz it's becoming very high in demand. If you do not have your kids in swag. You better register now because literally this year is already full.
Yeah, so we're actually for me right now, I'm talking about twenty twenty five. Because twenty twenty four is. Yeah, there will be opportunities for for kids to um. Participate, attend camps and things like that. But as far as like, me doing more stuff. Yeah, um so, but anyway, that sense of belonging, that is something that we've been talking about and that's what our camps are. It's I belong. And it's not, I belong here. It's just simply I belong. Because here is wherever you are.
Anybody who has watched me in the past, you guys know I'm really animated. I've been trying so hard to be just like not interrupting. But this is such a good, good conversation. Um it's that chicken noodle soup kinda good for your soul. Somebody is hearing this and they're like, you know, I've been in spaces, I've tried to exercise as a leader. People have rejected me because of who I am. I don't fit in. My number one classic is, you know, I don't get along with other women. Women don't like me. Really, there's a lot of work that women, people, human beings have to do in themselves in order. For us to have a a really healthy community. But we have to talk about that. We have to confront some of those spaces that really we don't wanna go into. And I really believe that swag introduces that at a very early age. And I think one of the secret sauces for the step team has been. Making sure that they stay connected with all of the different circles and pieces. That is like a requirement. Like, if you wanna be a step team captain, you need to go to swag's leadership camp. Um if you wanna do this, you have to go and uh. Go to these different spaces and connect with certain people depending on what school you're at. And that is where the key is. We are trying to be everything. And then when we're burnt out, burnt out, beat down. Tow up from the flow up, um then we're looking like, what's going on with me? What, what did I do? Why did this happen? No. It's not a matter of you doing something, it's you're not looking at the full puzzle piece. And I love that you said that not everybody can be a corner. You have to remember that. And everyone has. Um everybody has a part to play. I always even think about the puzzle pieces in general. The edges have to be set first. Before you get to the center. And so it's all that preparation, it's all that healing work, it's all the reflective work. This is real.
So what do the edges create?
They create the. I was gonna say the framework for the picture, but the boundary.
So I always say this, like, walls keep people out. Boundaries teach people where the door is.
That's it.
So how do you access people? Are you, you, my students know, people, people that are around me know. This is how you access me. You access me with respect. Your energy has to be right. You can't come to me any kinda way and expect full access of me. Because when you access someone, you're getting access to their emotions. You're getting access to what they've been through. What they're going to experience in the future. You're bringing all of whatever you got going on into their space. So it's important to protect the that your boundary, like know that. And then if people try to access you, that like, listen. That door for me is just closed and locked until you can access me correctly. And I will stand there and look at you through the window until you can access me correctly. I eh I have to have that boundary. Um it's so important. It is so important to have that. But with those pieces of the puzzle and people feeling like they belong, that sense of belonging is you being able to show up. And know, hey, I I'm having some trouble fitting here. So maybe this is not my space. Fitting in can be so uncomfortable. Have you ever worn a shoe that's too small? Exactly. You'd be kicking the mugs off as soon as you get home.
Walking all kinda funny. Whole back leg hurting, you gotta. Cuz your toes been crawled up all day in the shoe.
That's the fitting in. Fitting in will make you feel so. You'll be uncomfortable all day long. And the same people that you've been with all day and you've been like, ah, smiling and tolerating. All day long. As soon as you get home and one person from that group sends you a text and your response is, oh, eh, I don't wanna talk to them. Why? Because maybe you've just been fitting in all day. And you were, you you don't understand, like, I'm so tired when you get home. Hmm, you've probably been trying to just fit in all day. When you belong. You don't have to worry about that.
No code switching. Changing face, no changing your tone. Um you're basically your authentic self. You you are really living your authentic self, understanding that you do not have to be the center of everything because everyone is the center of everything.
Yes. Well, here's the other thing you were saying about people being exhausted, just tired, whatever. The way that swag defines strong is confidence in understanding what your limits are. While honoring help from others. We don't define strong like society does. You know, a lot of times everybody like, the strong black woman, she can do it all by herself, you know? And it's like, it's time for us to retire that cape.
All day.
We're, we're done with that. So understanding what your limits are while honoring help from others, that is how swag defines strong. So we're strong women achieving greatness, knowing that we need a village. We cannot do it, do this by ourselves. Because we're carrying all these things. And maybe we have made it successfully into some spaces. We made it in there. But what we don't realize is, we got in the room. But we've dropped our mental health, we've dropped our joy, we've dropped our peace all along the way. So you in the room, but you're missing. Some important things. So allowing people to help you, like know, know who your village is.
I I remember this lady saying to me, you live in a house with no furniture. And um you know, you can, I know, that was my favorite. Listen, my parents are from down south, so you know the down south. Metaphors are always. And uh when she said that to me, I was like, oh, what does that mean? But she was trying to explain that you can have a certain type of house. You can live in a beautiful mansion. But when you go into that space. Is it a home? Does it feel right? Does it have the things that you love and you want to have in the home? And so, you know, and and sometimes it just means simply that you're not, you're empty inside. You know, you look like you've got the, you've got everything together, but you're empty. And it's important for us to have constant people in our lives. That are going to remind us of what it means to be our authentic self. And I go back to something I say all the time. It is important for me to have women around me, and even men around me and people around me. Who are going to remind me of who I want to be every single step of the way. When I'm in my worst place. I want them to say, we got you. When I'm in my best place, I want them to say, we got you. And sometimes they can only get me with certain boundaries because they're protecting their own peace and they're protecting their own stuff. But if we take an opportunity to think about who we want to be and surround us with ourselves with people. Who genuinely want to see you win, succeed, grow. My number one thing I talk about is me being a mother. I want to be a good mother so bad. Like, that is on top of my list. Everything I do, everything I talk about, what are the priorities, what is, what is important? And um we also had to talk about shared authors as well. So we did this author and reading thing together, y'all. We all have, like, it's me, April, um Ms. Jamie, we have books out that are children's books. They're so beautiful. And we've done a lot of little events together. And so it's my little book crew. But um you know, she made this book um um called um I Love You, uh is it just called The Moon, uh Love You to the Moon?
Yes, it's it's Books That Sing.
Yes, Books That Sing, I Love You to the Moon and All the Way Back. And my daughter loves. This book, like, to the point where obsession, two o'clock in the morning. And she's looking at me talking about mommy, moon book. And I'm like, girl, if you don't go to bed, we are not reading. Or listening to Ms. Jamie saying, hello, hello. We're not. But that's her favorite song, and it makes me feel so connected with her. And it's these materials and things that help us feel connected, make me feel belonging, feel belong, like I belong as a mother in this space. And that's where we're getting to, which is the school board. You're creating this sense of belonging for students and parents and community. And you hit so many different angles. You've done so many different things. August fifth, you have an open house at um, is it the Mango Tree? This is not the Mango Tree downtown. This is the one up north. And it's their new one. And so they're going, at what time? Tell us, uh, give us a little shout out.
So it'd be the Mango Tree North, uh and it will be five P M to eight thirty P M. There's gonna be entertainment there. My friend Latrice Williams will be there singing. I will be performing as well. And there will also be a student, a Mead student, he will be singing a couple of songs. Yes, and there will be people from the Mead community that will be there and they will be speaking on my behalf. Um endorsing me, validating my candidacy. All of the things. I'm so thankful that even the incumbent, Bob Olson, has endorsed me. So even he looked at me and said, if, yes, and if we want me to be great and continue to be great.
Call Jamie.
Yes, then this is the person that we need to be on our board. So thankful for that opportunity. But I would love for you all to come out and be a part of this. There's gonna be a sign reveal. So everybody's been asking me like, where are your sign? We wanna sign, we wanna, well, there will be a sign reveal at this event. And you can, if you can, even if you can't stay, just come by, uh say hello, pick up a sign. Pick up a sign for your yard. Um and you know, hopefully like everybody will get their signs and put them up. And it'll be like they've grown overnight.
And they will, and they will. And you know, I wanted to interview you about this whole, this whole process. And uh this journey because you're making history just by signing up. And when you get um elected, I'm speaking in very much Hope framework. You know, you would be the very first person of color, woman of color, to ever sit on this, this, this uh board. It's important for us to think about how our votes actually make history and how we change things. And we can't do that unless we recognize what has been done and what we need to change. And also, how do we need to move forward?
I think Mead is ready to make history.
One hundred percent, one hundred percent. Um you know, as we end our podcast, I want to um learn about one thing. You want to inspire our listeners or our viewers with uh before we close out.
So one thing that always kinda stays with me, um and I share this with people. Is hold yourself to a standard of grace and not perfection.
That's it.
Being able to look at other people, understand that they are humans, they are flawed. We're all fa- flawed. But if we live by that grace and not trying to be perfect all the time in the things that we say and we do. Um and being able to hold ourselves to that, and holding other people to that as well. I believe that we can move together in a way that promotes unity and a sense of belonging.
I love it. I wanna thank you so much for being here today. I have truly enjoyed this. This is not gonna be the last time you see Ms. Jamie here. She will be back. We, you have to be back. This is a must, okay? Um and most importantly, we hope you guys come back. Uh my name is Stephanie Courtney and I'm the host of the Learning Project Network Podcast. I wanna just leave you with this. Please make sure that you are thinking about how can you center lived experiences, voices. To really help make change in our community. Sometimes making change is not on a large scale, but sometimes it's just inward. It's just within you. If we all do the work within ourselves, we can do mighty things. I wanna thank you for listening. Until next time, I'm your host, Stephanie Courtney. See you later.